Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. We have a couple scouts here from Troop 524. If you gentlemen would like to come up and lead us for the pledge, and if everybody would rise, why don't you come up to about here, guys? Awesome. Thank you.
I will lead you just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then before you guys sit down, why don't you just tell us who you are and what you're doing here?
I'm Isaac Andrewjack.
I'm Joe Andrewjack.
And we're from Troop 524. We're here to do the community in the nation, I mean, the citizenship in the community, Mayor Badge.
I had your older brother Gabe in Scouts when I was there. All right. Let's see. Next on our agenda is the roll call.
Councilmember Gascoviek.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Now to adopt this evening's agenda.
I'll move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler, to Demmer. Thank you. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And our very first item then is to welcome Mr. Friday for the Crooked Lake Area Association presentation. Go ahead and step up the ambo there and give us your name and how it's going.
Mind if I take this off?
Absolutely not. Go ahead.
I am Joel Friday. I'm the Coon Rapids watchdog for the Crooked Lake Area Association. I've given each of the council member our letter for the year. If anybody would like a copy, stop me. And I've got a few extra copies here as well. The association just, you know, wants to come out once a year and thank the city for participating in the invasive species, funds that are provided. We've gotten the Eurasian milfoil down to next to nothing. We pulled a few plants this year. We had a little bit of treatment on the curly leaf pond weed, which has been our latest bugaboo, but we only treated a few acres of that even. So the lake's in great shape. As a matter of fact, as it says here, I've never seen the lake so clear. Couple of fun things that have happened on the lake this year. One of the lake residents, the Andover watchdog, Dan Anderson, cut a hundred-foot circle into the lake. And you may have seen this on the Coon Rapids Herald or whatever the paper is of record now. And we spun it around, so we had an ice carousel out on the lake. And then you may have also seen that ice yoga is now a thing. This year, several of the ladies, one of the ladies teaches yoga. She made it on several of the newscasts. They do, they bring their yoga mats out on the ice and do their yoga out there. So they became semi-famous by doing that. I've actually seen other lakes doing that now too, but they go out there. So one of the cool things about living on the lake is you never know what you're gonna see. You know, people are having fun out there. There's four-wheelers out there ripping around. There's snowmobiles, you know, just all kinds of different recreation. Ice fishermen this time of year, of course. And, you know, it's just a, it's the hidden gem of the city, I think. And, you know, if you ever get a chance, come on out. We'll be doing our summer general picnic, I believe, the last Sunday in July this year. And it's usually like 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. So stop by Crooked Lake Beach. You guys did a wonderful job of updating that park. So we thank you on that. Any questions?
No, other than just kudos to the partnership. And, I mean, this is almost like a victory lap, the way that lake has turned out. That's just beautiful.
Yeah. Well, last, I mean, with COVID, guess where everybody was at the beach this summer? I mean, there was a ton of people. Usually, we might see 10 or 20 people at the beach at any given time, all summer long, weekdays, whatever it was. There was easily 100 people out there enjoying the beach, doing things they shouldn't do, but they were doing a lot of things that, you know, just having fun. They were jumping off your new fishing piers. They were loving that. That was a new sport this year.
Well, when they do that, give them one of these, Joel.
They're having fun, you know. I think one of the park board was there and he was telling us, yeah, they're jumping out the pier. And we were at the picnic. And I look back and there's like five of them jumping off right then and there while he's there. It's like, you know, they're having fun. So it's a, it's a great lake. It's a lot of fun. Stop out, take a look at it, you know, enjoy, enjoy the beauty that it is.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Ice yoga. That's not a Minnesota thing.
Yeah, right?
I really thought we'd go with Snogga.
Snogga?
I call it ice hockey yoga.
Yeah. And that ice carousel was really something. That was a bit of a viral.
Yeah, he's done that every year. This is the third year he's had success.
He's got quite the system for doing it now. All right. We are on to the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move approval of the February 16th, 2021 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to approve the service agreement with Alexandra House. Alexandra House is a nonprofit corporation that is Anoka County's only women's shelter. It provides a 24-hour shelter, support services, advocacy, educational opportunities to residents in the city and Anoka County. Alexandra House also works with the police department and the city attorney's office with domestic violence cases. Alexandra House has made a request for financial assistance for the services it provides to the city. The council did appropriate $12,500 to the Alexandra House in the 2021 budget for these services, and this service agreement reduces the party's wishes to writing. The agreement is for one year and can be terminated by either party with 30 days' notice. Should this contract be terminated, the funds paid shall be returned by Alexandra House in proportion to the number of months the contract was not fulfilled. And that annually, of course, is the Johnson Clause. So we're looking to approve the city to enter into a service agreement with Alexandra House to provide shelter, support services, and advocacy to affected city residents. And then item four, and the last item on our consent agenda, is to just accept as an informational item, a corporate officer change at Texas Roadhouse, 2780 Main Street. And that's just city code requires that the city council be notified of any change in legal ownership or beneficial interest of a liquor license holder. And the letter advising of their new officer is attached, and this is information only. And that's our entire consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move approval and acceptance of the two items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I would just make a note that the Alexandra House partnership is a great one for the city, and I think it benefits our police force in how it can work in the community. And so happy to have them be a partner again.
Yep, agreed. Mr. Stemwell, I think it would be good, the next time we have our budget discussion, that we maybe call that out and actually have a conversation about it.
Sure. Mayor and council, we can specifically point that out in the next round. And if council's got some different direction on that, we can talk about it that time.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Wasn't thinking a different, maybe more is all I was thinking.
Yeah. Fair. That's what I assumed you meant.
I was just gonna say, I think our contribution has remained pretty static and the same for many, many years. And so it's something we should talk about.
Yep, agreed.
Make sure it's proportional to our services and the benefits that they give to the city.
Yep. All right. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. We are on to item five, which is vacation of right-of-way easement for Foley Boulevard. As part of the Anoka County's reconstruction and realignment of Foley Boulevard, including the building of a railroad overpass, the county has requested the city vacate a portion of the city right-of-way in the area as shown on the attached maps, so that it reverts to the county as an adjacent landowner. City staff has verified that the right-of-way, which is parcel 68, to Met Council as part -- wait a minute. City staff has verified that the right-of-way to be vacated is no longer needed by the city. The county will then transfer land within the area to be vacated, which is parcel 68, to Met Council as part of the county's reconstruction of the MTC Park and Ride Facility. The county will retain slope and utility easements as needed for the county or city on the parcels transferred to Met Council. And on February 2nd, council adopted resolution number 21-31 to consider vacation of the right-of-way easement. All utilities have been notified, and there are no objections. In the process for vacating an easement under the city's charter requires a public hearing and passage of a resolution. Does anybody need any update from Mr. Brody or any other information before we open the public hearing? Okay. So then with that, on the vacation of the right-of-way easement for Foley Boulevard, we will open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address council for the vacation of easement for Foley Boulevard? Anybody here for the public easement on that? That's twice enough? I never know. All right. With that, then, I will close public hearing. And we're looking to adopt resolution 21-37, Vacating the Right-of-Way Easement. I will, yeah.
Counsel?
Hi, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to adopt resolution number 21-37, Vacating the Right-of-Way Easement for Foley Boulevard. Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. As noted, this requires a four-fifths majority in favor of the resolution to vacate. Any discussion?
It seems super straightforward that we want the overpass. Is there, I guess I'm looking at Tim, because he can't see me looking at him. Is there anything at all interesting about this one?
Now, Councilmember Demmer, council, it's just merely a cleanup of some land issues with the realignment of the roadway and just allowing us to maintain our utilities through that location. It's a land transfer piece, trying to make the transit facility whole. So it's just moving some property lines, and then we'll have new easements dedicated over any realignments we do.
Okay. So we're not losing the ability to drain anything or run any wires, or we'll get those back later?
It's our water main primarily and sanitary sewer. So yes, it's not going anywhere. We just need to get the new documents once it's done.
Thank you.
And they're not gonna expand that parking lot while we're still using Foley, right?
That will likely be a phased...
And you're locked.
To, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Hammer. All right. Any other discussion on that?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? And that motion carries. And that was unanimous. So apparently that covers our four fifths. We're on to item six under New Business. That's to consider planning case 19-18. Consider extension of preliminary plat approval, Pheasant Hollow, 12031 Partridge Street, North Star Improvements. Mr. Harlickers, anything you want to go over this? It looks like this went through planning commission. This was something that came before us a while back, and they just want to do a one-year extension of their plat approval. And the planning approval, the planning commission was unanimous in wanting to grant them that year. Right?
Right. Mayor and council members, preliminary plats are valid for one year. This was approved on March 4th, 2020, so the expiration is Thursday of this week. And they are requesting a one-year extension to March 4th, 2022. And I'd just like to include that the conditions of the March 4th, 2020 approval will remain in effect.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Harlicker?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-year extension for the preliminary plat for Pheasant Hollow, and that the conditions of the March 4th, 2020 approval remain in effect.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Just, I mean, to me, I know it's a housekeeping kind of a thing, but it also is a courtesy in that, because if this would expire, they would have to go back through the entire site plan and pay all of those fees again and do everything again. So it's easier for everybody if we just do the extension.
Agreed. Any other discussion?
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that motion carries, and they've received their extension to March 4th, 2022. All right. Item seven is to consider planning case 21-3. Consider preliminary plat and final plat for two commercial lots, 1829 Northdale Boulevard, MK Enterprises. This is that old BP station right on the northeast corner of Hanson and Northdale. I just had to work through it, piece at a time there.
You got it.
And the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing small convenience store and plat the property into two commercial lots. This plat is being submitted in conjunction with a site plan for a car wash and a multi-tenant commercial building. Lot 1 is .96 acres, and it's being created for the car wash. Lot 2 is .88 acres, and this lot is being created for the multi-tenant commercial building. The lots comply with the dimensional requirements and area requirements of the general commercial district. Park dedication was collected when the convenience store was constructed. At the February 18th planning commission meeting, no one spoke at the public hearing. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the preliminary plat, and the commission also voted unanimously to approve the corresponding site plan for the car wash and the commercial building. Would anybody like Mr. Harlicker's dog and pony show on this? I thought it was pretty straightforward, but would you be disappointed if he didn't present, Mr. Harlicker?
I'll get over it. Thanks for asking, Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Harlicker. All right.
Mr. Mayor, maybe just one quick question of...
Sure. Councilmember Demmer.
This size is reasonable for a multi-tenant. There's gonna be room for parking. There's gonna be room for multiple tenants. Everything's cool. Like, .88 acres is plenty big. That triangle shape is plenty big, all that.
Yeah, when, Councilmember, when the planning commission did look at this, they did discuss parking. There will be a shared parking agreement between the two properties to accommodate shared parking and access.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
You know, I don't have any real concerns about the property or the plan. I think it all looks really straightforward. It is a gas station. I'm wondering if there has been any inquiry about any environmental issues or concerns that might relate to the property, given that we're talking about some of the...
That was also discussed at the planning commission meeting. There was an environmental study that tanks have been removed. There was some minor remediation in the areas where the top of the tanks were, but that was all they found.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I think they can only be closed for six months, isn't it? And then they have to pull the tanks. Is that the rule? Six months?
I'm not sure.
They can't languish.
Yeah, they can't, yeah. They can't leave there very long. That's why that one on Coon Rapids Boulevard used to open every once in a while. But now it's open, so that's nice. All right.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plat and approve resolution 21-38, granting final plat approval for MK Business Park with two stated conditions. One, that all engineering comments be addressed, and two, all comments from Anoka County Highway Department be addressed.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item eight, which is to consider resolution 21-6-sub-9, awarding a contract for Crooked Lake Boulevard and Robinson Drive Mill and Overlay. Pavement conditions on Crooked Lake Boulevard between Coon Rapids Boulevard and the Coon Rapids Boulevard Service Road, right next to Walgreens there by the Coon Rapids Ice Center, as well as along Robinson Drive between 111th Avenue and Yegrit Boulevard, have deteriorated rapidly over the last several years. And this proposed Mill and Overlay treatment is expected to last between eight and 10 years. The city will continue to monitor and maintain the pavement conditions of each roadway segment by filling cracks as needed. Bids were advertised January 22nd and 29th, 2021. Bids were received February 19th. And it looks like we had quite a few bidders and quite a few of them wanted the job. So the engineer's estimate for the project was 241,000, and the low bidder came in from Park Construction at 190,988.22. And they have successfully completed projects throughout the city. So pending award of the contract, the work will be scheduled to take place in May of 2021. I thought just in case Mr. Hammer's mic was gonna lock up again, I would just go through that. Mr. Hammer, anything you wanted to add to that? No?
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Counsel, what are your wishes here?
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Making sure I'm making the right motion here. I would move adoption of resolution number 21-6-sub-9, awarding contract to Park Construction Company in the amount of 190,988.22 for the Crooked Lake Boulevard and Robinson Drive Mill and Overlay project.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gascoviek.
Question for Mr. Hammer. When was Robinson Drive last reconstructed, a full reconstruction?
Councilmember Gascoviek, I want to say it was, I'm happy to go back and look for you to give you the right answer, and I can do that in my file system here. But I want to say it was early 2000, like 2005, 2007, somewhere in there. But I can follow up for sure for you.
And the reason I ask is, and I know that we have the funds in our 2021 street construction fund, but is there any assessments made with this Mill and Overlay? It doesn't appear to, and is that the reason?
Councilmember Gascoviek, that is correct. There are no assessments proposed. Most of this segment, all of the houses, front and side streets, there's a couple of small ones in there. We're kind of taking the approach like we have in the past few years of looking at our collector streets, doing it early enough in the season to take advantage of some good prices, foregoing the 429 process. So the savings we get in the bidding more than makes up for the assessments that would be there based upon these types of projects.
Good. Thank you.
These Mill and overlays are such good buys.
They are.
And they're so nice. I mean, Avicet and Exavis and all those streets we've done before, gosh, are just wonderful and they're just hardly a blip in our budget, really. So. Other discussion?
Hi, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I think we talked about it last time, so it's more for the benefit of people at home, that, you know, it always looks a little weird when you do one entire road and then like one block of a different road somewhere way across. But it was a specific degradation of that one block, so you might as well bid it together, was I believe what we talked about last time. And I see nodding, so, okay.
Nice. Nice use of the word degradation. I like that. Just slid right in there.
Got to get one word of the weekend, you know.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine, consider resolution 21-36, accepting the Foam Recycling Coalition grant and approving an agreement, resolution 21-39, amending the 2021 recycling center fund budget. And I see, without Ms. Sinclair, Mr. Hammer, do you want me to just read these discussion points? They're pretty comprehensive.
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to summarize quickly if my microphone hangs with us here.
All right.
Ms. Sinclair was successful in securing another grant. We tried to do it to line up with the timing for the potential expansion project. They both come together, so we've got some things we can do now in advance of that project, which will be happening later this year. And some things will have to wait as more items come on board. So we'd like to accept this grant, move forward with the forklift purchase, because that can be used immediately, not only for the recycle center but other areas. And we'll catch up with the software when we have the volume and the larger space. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is our first forklift for the recycling center, isn't it?
Correct, Mayor and Council. They've investigated before. This just provided a nice opportunity to check that box with somebody else's money.
Yeah, nice.
Hi, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I think I'm reading this correctly, that as part of this, we're expanding to those, that type of styrofoam we haven't normally done, the takeout foods and the, I know we had a pilot going, so I guess I should assume that that pilot was successful. Is that correct?
That is correct. The pilot was successful, and it continues now. We're a little limited in capacity, but we're continuing with that pilot and accepting that material today because it has been successful.
Great. Okay.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hammer?
I'll keep rolling if you want, then.
Perfect. Councilmember Demmer.
Move to adopt resolution 21-36, accepting the $50,000 grant from the Foam Recycling Coalition, and to approve execution of the attached grant agreement between the city of Coon Rapids and the Foam Recycling Coalition. One at a time or both?
You can take them together.
And further, move to adopt resolution 21-39, amending the 2021 recycling center fund budget for the purchase of a forklift and maintenance and repair related to styrofoam program.
I'll second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson. Discussion?
It's not every day you get to buy a forklift.
Nope.
That's fair.
Councilmember Geisler.
I just think it's fabulous that our recycling center is looking for new ways to expand what can we recycle, to be a big leader in that for our surrounding communities. So if you've got that styrofoam, take it to the recycling center. They're recycling, even, you know, the big packing styrofoam can be recycled as well there. So lots of great progress in what can be recycled.
I particularly like how aggressive she is finding money.
Yes.
I like doing things with other people's money.
Yes.
And not our residents. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And it looks like we're up to the Grant Fernilia Show, the 2020 Community Development Annual Report.
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me while I remove my mask here without losing my glasses. I have a presentation. I know in years past, the council has asked for an update. I've tried to sneak it in on consent, and you've caught it, and asked that I provide that presentation, just covering our reports. I'm not going to go through the whole report, but I'll just touch on some of the highlights. I do want to just acknowledge the teamwork, you know, without stating the obvious, last year was a challenging year for everyone here at the city, including staff in community development. And, you know, really, I'm very proud of the work that we did. I'm fortunate to work with a great team. And, you know, we pivoted multiple times to try and figure out how to deliver services to our residents. About a year ago, we were going through this exercise of how do we deliver services to the public? And that business model changed numerous times, and our staff didn't complain. They just figured it out because really there was no other option available to us. So I also...
So I also wanna acknowledge the work of Tara Jenkins. She is the one that, uh, puts the polish on this report. Uh, she works in the Communications Office with Steph Ring and she is just a, a wonderful, uh, a wonderful asset that we have here at the, at the city. Obviously, it's hard to ignore the impact of the pandemic. As the Counsel is aware, the, the city did respond, uh, to the economic impacts of, of the COVID nineteen pandemic and allocated some of the CARES money that we received, um, from the federal government to provide small businesses assistance. And so we ended up providing a little over a million, right around a million four, um, seventy-two grants to businesses and nonprofits in two rounds of, of funding. And that was a, an extraordinary effort to get that off the ground. Uh, we're grateful for Counsel's support for that and we know that, um, it has made a difference in our, in our community. I will also say that there are some other things that we did that weren't maybe as well-known, including relaxing some of our standards as it relates to temporary outdoor dining. We were doing what we could to help our businesses, uh, particularly our restaurants, um, and some of them took advantage of that. We also promoted the, um, Minnesota housings, uh, the Minnesota Housing Agency's, uh, CARES funding, which provided rental assistance to, to tenants in need, um, as well as the county's program to provide business assistance. So we had our own allocation. The county had additional resources as well. Um, we did some outreach. We called businesses just to check in. Um, a lot of them were very surprised that city staff would be calling just to see how they were doing. But it was, I think, an extraordinary effort and, and really something that I think demonstrated the commitment of the city to our business community and most of them, um, it was very well-received. Um, I do wanna also acknowledge, and it's not part of this report, you know, there is still some work to be done. From our, particularly as it relates to employment, from our peak of employment in July of two thousand nineteen to our valley, if you will, in May of two thousand twenty, we lost thirty-five hundred jobs. Of that number, we've gained back about a thousand, so about thirty percent of what was lost by the end of the year, by, by December, there were about a thousand jobs that came back. There's still two thousand jobs that, that have been lost and, and, um, you know, it is our hope that those will come back at some point, especially as there's improvements in vaccines and, and, uh, and declining rates for COVID. But, uh, we'll have to monitor those things. And if there are policy changes that we need to make, um, we'll certainly bring those forward to the Counsel. But we're very, very pleased with the work that, that the city did as it relates to our, um, business assistance program. I do wanna highlight, um, Port Riverwalk. It is, um, interesting. That was about a year ago that we actually closed on that land. A lot of things have happened and, and it's easy to overlook the work that has gone on down there. So about a year ago, we did sell the site to Center Homes and they have been going, uh, gangbusters, building new homes. Uh, I don't have an exact count on the number of homes that have been constructed, but, um, they're, they're very pleased with the sales. Um, if you've been following lumber prices, there have been substantial increases in the cost of single-family homes. Um, and they're still selling homes, just simply because there isn't a lot of inventory out there. So obviously, that's a factor that will influence sales, but so far, um, Center reports that, that, that sales are still very, very strong. The other thing I wanna mention is some of the work that we've done infrastructure-wise. Um, our staff along with Anoka County worked on the reconstruction of Coon Rapids Boulevard from Yegret to Avoset Zilla Street. Uh, a lot of that work was completed last year. I know it was an inconvenience for, for our community. Um, we had lane restrictions and, and other things, but we're through, we're through the worst of it. We've got some, some punch list items and some landscaping, uh, issues to, to address, uh, this, this spring, but that work should be completed. The other good news is the pedestrian bridge, as Counsel is aware. Um, we have a, a plan for a pedestrian bridge to connect, uh, Coon Creek Regional Trail across Coon Rapids Boulevard and the city was successful, um, actually earlier this year, just, uh, a few weeks ago, in, um, receiving federal funds through the regional solicitation. So of the roughly four and a half million dollar cost, we have about half of it covered under, under that regional solicitation. We're, we're, um, trying to secure additional assistance if we can through the state, so we'll, we'll see where that goes. But that project would be slated to start in two thousand twenty-four, so very excited about, about that. Also on the housing front, um, was the completion of the Nova and Lyra Apartments, uh, up at Riverdale Station, which were developed by Sherman and Associates. Um, the Lyra Apartments, which is the market rate building, actually came online right about the time that the pandemic hit. Uh, and they have been very pleased with, with that building. Leasing has been extremely strong. They're very excited about that, as Counsel is aware. A few weeks ago, we had a work session with an update from the developer about their plans for phase two or phase three, however, however we wanna describe it, uh, but they've been very impressed with, with, uh, with the way that that project has, has leased out. Uh, Real Estate Equities, uh, developed a, uh, Spring House Apartments down in Port Evergreen on the south end of our community. Uh, that project is just about ready to open, uh, and I talked with the developer last week and they're at almost a hundred percent lease-up on that building as well. So there's a lot of demand for housing, uh, market rate housing, affordable housing, and, and all of those projects will total about four hundred and nineteen units of new housing that will be coming online. Um, and that will add to the, add to our housing stock and, and create additional options for, for our residents, so very pleased with that. On the business development front, a lot of exciting things are going on. You know, in spite of the challenges with the pandemic and the economy, um, I think it's safe to say that retail is not dead. Brick and mortar retail, um, is, I think, evolving and transforming. Um, retailers are figuring out how to, how to, how to be viable, uh, in today's world. Pandemic has taught a number of lessons, but, you know, we're seeing a lot of investment. Now granted, some of these projects started, uh, prior to the pandemic, but the fact that, you know, they're still underway and they still have, um, you know, tenants plan to occupy those buildings, I think speaks very well to, to, you know, what's going on in our, in the retail sector of our economy. Um, and I've highlighted just a few of the retail buildings that, um, that have been completed or are underway. Uh, I can confirm, as of Friday, we learned that on the Famous Dave's site, actually Famous Dave's is gonna go back into that building. Uh, they have, uh, I think, a quick queue cafeteria-style format. I'm not exactly certain how that works. But I know there was a lot of interest in what was gonna happen to Famous Dave's and they were very, I think, um, tight-lipped about what they were gonna do, but they are going back in as a tenant, so very, very nice to see that. A lot of, uh, interest in what's going on at JCPenney's. We've, we've talked about that. Uh, a lot of rumors about a potential grocery user, which we've not been able to confirm. Uh, but that building will undergo renovations this summer, so, um, I don't think they would be putting that kind of money into, into the building if, if there wasn't some kind of tenant lined up. And hopefully at some point fairly soon, uh, they'll, they'll announce that. But, uh, but that will be, I think, uh, an important piece in, in the overall, um, you know, viability of, of the Riverdale Village development. I wanted to just touch on briefly building permits. Um, there was a lot of construction that did go on last year. A lot of the larger permits were for institutional-type uses, so you can see River Trail Learning Center. Coon Rapids High School has gone through its, its second, uh, phase of its, of its renovation project. Uh, as well as Anoka Ramsey Community College is undergoing, um, some, some renovation work there. They also have a, a plan for, for some additional work that we expect is gonna come online in the next year or so. So while overall, you know, building valuation was down, I think we all know why that is and, and permits were down, especially if you compare it to two thousand nineteen, um, if you compare it to the years prior to that, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, you know, we had a lot of storm damage permits that were issued. So I think that skewed some of those results in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So if you look at the numbers in terms of valuation and permits, it looks, it looks more similar to two thousand sixteen, uh, which I would say is more of a normalized year. So I think all in all, you know, things, things were not as bad as, as they might have been, uh, especially when we started, um, you know, we're going into the second quarter of, of two thousand twenty. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Front Door Program, which is, uh, just a wonderful program. Uh, this is, last year was the second year, uh, of the Front Door Program. Uh, as Counsel is aware, this was something that the Mortgage Assistance Foundation, uh, which now no longer exists, but we're gonna have a conversation about, um, about that group and, and the role they may play in the future. But the Mortgage Assistance Foundation was instrumental in underwriting that program. Um, and last year, there was a little over a million dollars' worth of projects, uh, that were financed through that. Uh, this is just an example of, of, of some of the work that went on. It very much is a curb appeal program. It's intended to really spruce up properties and, um, so we were very happy with those results. Phase three, the two thousand twenty-one program, just, the application window just closed, I think, on March first. Uh, I don't have numbers on, on, um, the number of applicants, but I would expect that would be very similar to, to what we've done the last, the last couple of years. Um, it's also important to acknowledge the work of our, of our, um, citizen volunteers who are on our advisory commissions. Community Development, um, provides liaison services to both the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Both of those groups met, uh, during the pandemic, uh, a combination of both virtual meetings and in-person. Um, and we're grateful for the, for the work that, the work that they do, uh, and their, their continued commitment to the city. So, uh, just something worth, worth acknowledging. The last thing I was gonna mention before I'll wrap up is a new initiative, uh, related to sustainability. So as Counsel is aware, last year, we had a lot of internal conversations about sustainability. What's the right home for sustainability? The work, uh, a lot of the work that Clean Sinclair had been doing. And after, after a lot of discussion, we agreed that community development is the right home. Um, and very excited about that work. We hired a sustainability planner last December, Olivia Doro Hovland, and she started, uh, back in January. You'll have an opportunity to meet her in a, in a couple of weeks, uh, at a work session. Tended my first sustainability commission a couple of weeks ago, uh, or last week, maybe it was. Um, a great group of, of people, very excited about that work and about the opportunities that lie ahead. So, um, you know, I think it's really a, just a demonstration that, that the city, um, I think is committed to sustainability and I think the future looks bright as it, uh, as it relates to that work. We'll talk about community solar, the Green Steps Program, which, which we've been working on for a number of years, but it is our, our intent to, to get to the next step in the process, which will, which will involve some additional work, but very excited about that. So, um, we will have this report available for the public. If they're interested in, in viewing it, it'll be posted online, um, under our Community Development page. Um, I just wanna, in closing, thank the Counsel for, for, for your support, um, of our department. Um, I also wanna thank my staff for all the work that, that they did. It was certainly a, a challenging year, but we figured it out, um, and produced, I think, very high-quality work and, and serving our residents. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Fornelius, that new, uh, new creations up in the gateway, the, the two-story building, is that whole building gonna be basically daycare then?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, that's a nice-sized building.
Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Demmer?
You know, one of the most interesting pages I thought here was the Property Maintenance Division and just how far down the number of complaints and citations were this year. So, you know, it's really great when our inspectors don't have to do a lot of work. And, and, uh, you know, the, the long grass complaints were down, the, the property maintenance complaints were down. So it looks like the people in Coon Rapids did a pretty good job keeping up their houses and property this year, so. That's, that's a call-out to the, the residents, not, not really a call-out to you guys, but I just thought I would, I would mention it because it's so far below where it's been previous years.
It, it has been, um, and I will say, Councilmember Demmer, that, um, you know, we did, we did switch gears a little bit in terms of our enforcement philosophy, if you will. We, we instituted, um, on a temporary basis, although we are continuing it to, to today, we're, we'll have to reevaluate how long we, we have put that system in place, but used a courtesy letter. So rather than a citation as kind of the initial introduction to, to an issue that you may have, we started with a letter. Um, and I will tell you, just anecdotally talking to our staff, um, it seemed to work. People seemed to respond to that. Now, we still, I think, need the administrative citation, uh, system in our toolbox, uh, for cases where courtesy letter doesn't work. But it seemed like that process, while it did take a little longer, uh, I think produced encouraging results. So that's something that we'll have to watch and, and continue to, to evaluate in terms of, do we wanna consider that as maybe a, a standard practice?
As a clarification to Councilmember Demmer's comments, our inspectors are still working hard, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It's just better when they don't have to abate because everything gets taken care of.
They are, they are very busy.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, Council, uh, Carlson.
Fornelius, I was just, uh, wondering about that Famous Dave's quick queue. I'm particularly excited about that. Is that in the second building then, off of, uh, Main Street?
Correct. That's in the, that's in the multi-tenant building that's off of the, off of the corner. I believe the, the bank is going to be on the, kind of the end or the corner. And Famous Dave's will be in that multi-tenant building.
Thank you.
You missed a barbecue, don't you?
I just love them, I just love, loving the way they fix her all up in there and then disappear. Now I was broken-hearted.
Councilmember Geisler?
Just, you know, general, you know, I mean, whether it was Tara putting it all together, but you and your team bringing all of the data together. Um, it's great to have a nice concise, look at all the great things that are happening in our community. You know, and the city supports this and enables it. I mean, it's not like we go say, oh, we're gonna go put this thing here or this thing there because we don't own those, the, the land like we did with, with trying to find the Center Homes. But being able to be welcoming to the businesses, to support them, um, so I appreciate and applaud all the work that your team did this last year.
Thank you. Absolutely. Nice job. Kudos to the whole staff. Thank you, Mr. Fornelius.
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Uh, move to accept the two thousand twenty Community Development Annual Report.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler to accept the two thousand twenty Community Development Annual Report. And thank you for keeping us on task.
Snuck in there. I did have a quick question, though. Do I have to also move the other two reports that were attached or are they purely FYI?
I believe those are informational, but if you wanna include them, you certainly can.
I just wanna thank the, those are both commission reports, uh, for planning and for adjustment appeals. And of course, thank you to everybody on those commissions. That's a lot of work.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are at the open mic public comment. Any of you gentlemen wanna come up and tell us what's going on or giving you a hard time? This Friday, we're all good on the lake.
Stoplights going up by the nerves.
Yes, it is. That's a good thing.
I was wondering if they were, if they were going up, they could all have just run away.
Alright, so nobody for open mic? We are going to, uh, look at an open mic response. At the last meeting, Mr. Nimlos came, guessing on the pronunciation, sorry. During the open mic portion of the February sixteenth meeting, he addressed the Counsel about backyard beekeeping. And, uh, this, kind of the letter that he received is, in November of two thousand nineteen, the City Council discussed beekeeping in a work session. City staff provided education on the difference between beekeeping and pollinator-friendly policies and discussed the importance of public education and awareness around this topic. And I really wanna thank you for the reminder on this. I'd really kind of, this was a good refresher. There was additional research done into similar ordinances from other cities to get an idea of how beekeeping could fit into the city code. And the direction from Counsel at that time was not to expand beekeeping citywide. Northwest Passage High School expressed an interest in beekeeping on school property for hands-on learning. The City Council supported using beekeeping at the high school as a pilot project before discussing citywide policy changes. Because of COVID nineteen, Northwest Passage High School has not moved forward with beekeeping over the last year. I went, oh, yeah, I remember this now. The city does not currently allow for beekeeping. The Sustainability Commission has identified promoting pollinator-friendly best practices as one of its two thousand twenty-one goals. as one of its two thousand twenty-one goals, but does not include beekeeping as part of that goal right now. Staff and the Sustainability Commission would need further direction from council on whether to reengage on the topic of beekeeping in the city, and a copy of this report will be provided to the resident. So that'll just, that'll be an issue for council to decide that our, probably at our spring retreat, if that's going to rise up again. I liked that plan with Northwest Passage. I'd forgotten all about that. And, okay, that's open mic and we are on to other business. What do we have for other business, council? Or Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and council, the only thing that I would like to mention is we do have an application on the city's website available right now for consideration for a Coon Creek Watershed District Board position. So the way this works is that city councils within that district are able to refer names to the county board for selection. We have to supply at least three names for them to formally consider our list, and so we've got until March eighth for those applications to come in, and that would come before the city council, the next council meeting.
All right. Sounds good. Any other business, folks? Wow, light. I have no notes at all, so.
Ready for spring.
I am, I'm really ready for spring. Have we, have we decided if we're going to have our concerts in the park this summer?
Mayor and council, yes, there's planning underway to consider that within the restrictions that are being provided, but since it's outdoors and there's availability for space, the Arts Commission spoke about that recently. I don't know if City Council, Lenzmeyer has any more specifics than that.
Okay, Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Mr. Mayor, that is exactly correct. We are moving forward with planning. We'll be ready to go. The Arts Commission has discussed all of the different aspects and we're just going to have to comply with whatever the COVID restrictions are at the time.
Sure. Well, that's, that's excellent, because as I've looking around other communities, they've, you know, they're, they're planning their outdoor concerts again, and so that's, I think that's good.
And we got to the point where we were able to open up the splash pad. I'm assuming there are plans to do that and maybe even consider movies in the park, maybe?
Correct. Mayor and council, yes. As part of the planning process for the parks and recreation programming, that'll go into the booklet that is mailed out to the residents, we're planning a number of those items right now. So any of those events that typically would occur, especially the ones that are outdoors and we have, you know, some ability to space people out and do things like that, we're going to plan for the splash pad. I, I suspect at this point, I would plan at this point to open it under the normal schedule, which would be right around Memorial Day, right before Memorial Day, because we found that park usage last year was, you know, one of probably the safer things that could be done, and once we opened it, there weren't, we didn't have any issues with COVID or overcrowding or tracing back cases to parks or splash pad or anything like that. So we feel really comfortable with opening those things on normal schedule this year.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Anderson's not here tonight. Do we know about the driving range? Because I know they'd planned on opening it last Saturday, but of course, we got snow.
Yes, Mayor and council, it was open very briefly. The plan then is to open it again with this warm weather and to expand some of that use as the snow starts to retreat. So we have, at some point, you have to be able to pick up the golf balls that are out on the range because you can't use the range machine to pick them up, and so they're looking forward to when most, if not all, the snow is gone from there. And frankly, that if the opportunity presents itself to open portions of the golf course, and I'm not saying this week, but with the snow melt, he gets, Mr. Hammer, Mr. Hammer, Mr. Anderson gets excited about the opportunities that, that might come after that. That being said, I will say that interest in the golf course this late winter and into spring has been like no other in probably ten or fifteen years. The number of patron cards and memberships that are being purchased right now is through the roof, so people are excited about golfing at bunker right out of the gate this year, which of course, we're excited about.
Excellent. Excellent. All right, and I encourage everyone to keep getting out and supporting our local restaurants that are open and, gosh, it's nice to get out to eat again, so. All right. Anything else? Councilmember Geisler?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.